Good evening.
Good evening.
We called the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I see evidence they're up. Happy to have everybody here. Someone said we've got a full house. We kind of thought, some may have taken a toll, but it looks like y'all made it in. We thank you for the sacrifice. Thank you for the sacrifice. At this time, we always start our meetings with, well, for young people. Welcome to the Liberty County Board of Commissioners meeting. We meet twice a month. This is our first meeting. We meet on Thursday also, where we take care of the business of Liberty County. Now, teach a moment, don't confuse. The city of Heinsborough has that government, but this is the county government. And these people who you see sitting here represent different areas of all of Liberty County. That's what the district represents. So there are certain territories they cover. And the citizens from that area would go to them with their concerns, and they'll bring those concerns back to us. Okay, so that's how, that's how it works. Everybody's familiar with the mayor and the city, but very few folk are familiar with the county and the county commissioners. That's who we are, all right? Bishop Benton, will you come down and lead us in our prayer and our pledge? Please stand for the invocation.
Chairman, before we begin on tonight, I want to take a moment on behalf of the UMA and thank you and the entire Board of Commissioners for all the job that you do. I'm sure that oftentimes you're not told that publicly, but we want to appreciate you for what you're doing and let you know we're not only praying for you privately, but we're praying for you publicly as well. With that in mind, let us pray. Our Father and our God, we're so thankful on tonight for this opportunity that we have to come together as a community. We pray, Father, for our commissioners and for the entire staff, that you would continue to bless them with the wisdom, the knowledge, the patience, the understanding that it's going to take to be able to lead our county to a better place. We pray not only for the commissioners and the staff, but we pray for our citizens who are here to represent the county as a whole, that you would bless us as we continue to unite one another and grow in grace and in the knowledge of our Lord and Savior. We thank you for this now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have two prayer requests. One is for the Ralph Dixon family. Mr. Dixon was a pillar in our community. And also, my county administrator has a family concern that he's, he's, he's trying to wrestle with, and he could use a little prayer and encouragement. So if he do that, we appreciate him, Mr. Dixon and the Brown family.
Amen. Let us pray. Father, while we may not know the family members personally, we know that you know them, and so we lift them up before you. Father, everybody that's attached to them, that's feeling a degree of sorrow and pain, we pray that you will be the God to them that only you can. Strengthen them in this hour. Help them, God, to be able to look to you in this time of adversity. Father, we trust and believe, God, that all things will work together for good because they love you and they're called according to your purpose. We ask you for this now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Special time on the agenda for some recognitions. We have a distinct and distinguished group with us. I might, now, I can't read my own writing. Coach, the coach come on up, if you will. We have the first preparatory baseball state champions in the house, so.
Can we all touch it?
I'm gonna say. In fact, we might keep it for a week or something.
Is the speaker right here?
Well, is he good there? I think, no, go to the podium if you will, please, sir. People at home can hear us being livestreamed.
Awesome. Hello, people at home. I'm Coach Elias Pacias. This is Tony Harmon and Robert Green. And behalf of all FPCA baseball, we want to thank Mr. Donald Lovett and the entire Board of Commissioners for having us here today. We really appreciate it, and we're grateful for this opportunity. It's been a blessing to be able to represent this county and bring something home to this county that hasn't been where it's belonged for the last forty-seven years. We're hopeful that we can do it again here shortly, and we can continue to grow this community into a baseball community. We believe that it has the passion and the players and the people to do so. And we're just so thankful and we're so blessed to have a truthfully God lead us to this, to this, you know, this will of his. Without these great kids and these wonderful families that have raised them, you know, just Christian first and, you know, very good, godly kids, we wouldn't have been able to get this done. And we want to continue to spread that message to the entire county and to all the people at home, everybody watching, all the kids as they grow up, that without God first in sports and in life, you won't be able to succeed at the same level that you couldn't without them. So I think that's the most important thing that I've learned from this process, and hopefully the kids learn as well, is when you put God first, that you truly can do anything. So, thank you once again.
Who's your team captain?
We have seven seniors.
Seven seniors? There's always a Harvard.
All of them, I guess.
Yeah, let's go with, I want to hear Mason speak.
Come on, Mason. Where's Mason? Come on, Mason. Go to the podium too, Mason, if you will. Give your name, please, sir.
Go to the podium.
No, no. We don't need a dissertation, Mason.
Yeah. My name's, my name is Mason Brunon, and I was one of the seniors on the FPCA baseball team. I think we had one of the best seasons in the school's history, and I think it was good because we put God first, and we always prayed before the games, and I think that helped us out a lot.
Let's go down for this photo op.
Come on, y'all. Quickly, come on.
Where are the parents?
Parents, all parents too?
All the parents at the stand. Young people, let's appreciate your parents. Look, I like what you said in the coast of Carol, that this community has potential also as a baseball community, both as basketball and football. And y'all do soccer too?
Yes, sir.
You do it well, so we appreciate it. We're gonna do this. Number team.
Oh, we might get these guys in front.
Where's Mason at? This is a one moment in time. Let's see. Liberty County Board of Commissioners, certificate of achievement, proud presenter to FPCA 2023 baseball team. Recognition and win the 2023 GIA A-class A baseball state championship presented as 11th day of July 2023, presented by the Liberty County Board of Commissioners. On the count of three, state champs. One, two, three.
State champs!
All right. there he is. He's a UGA two-time champion, Tremell Waltz, I was zooming in. Give him a hand for his accomplishment. Liberty County high grad, what year, Tremell?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. Still young, still young, still young, still young. And he had to pull up from practice to hope not to get in any trouble.
No, we just got off the field.
Did you? Well, we are proud of his accomplishment. We're proud of what he's done, how he represents Liberty County well. And Commissioner Fraser tells me there are other young people on the UGA's team who have roots in Liberty County. But certainly, Tremell, we appreciate you and your work, your diligence, and going back to do it again, so three peats, so we are proud of you, sir.
Go Dawgs!
Go Dawgs! Now, listen, so I made your underclassmen share, you got some words you want to share with us, sir?
I just want to appreciate everybody, you know, thank this loving everybody, the whole county, just for supporting and being there for me. Thank Liberty County, you know, everybody back there at high school, everybody that's my family that's there supporting me and everything. I just want to say thank y'all, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. His mother is here. Ms. Tracy, come on up. Commissioners, I should have had y'all just stay down there. Let's go down again.
There we go.
Tremell Waltz, University of Jordan, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, NCAA national football champion, presented on the 11th of July 2023, by the Liberty County Board of Commissioners. Anytime you represent Liberty County, represent us well, and we appreciate it. Young people, please do that. Say Liberty County proud, let's all be Liberty County proud. We lift the great, great earth things out of you. And, you know, people, it's so encouraging to hear you all say, you know, how God made a difference in your life. Please keep that, hold on to that. We need more of that in our society, so we appreciate that. And we appreciate you, Tremell, what you're doing. We pray for your safety and a successful year, and bring back the next championship.
Thank you.
Now, if you're ready to leave, you would understand, you're not pushing it. The minutes for my June meeting will require our approval. Have you had time to look over those?
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Six, June thirty-third. Any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by raising your hands, please. Any repose? I mentioned, I did announce Mr. Jones is once again tied up at his, at his work facility, so he sends his regrets that he can't be here. All right. New business, park naming request, Ms. Bella Jean. Ms. Bella. Come on.
Will you come up?
Yeah.
There were questions.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm honored to be here back in Liberty County. Thank you, Mr. Shareperson and the other Board of Commissioners. I'm here, I think you guys have read the memo I sent initially to the Liberty County Recreation Department, not knowing the procedure to modify the name of the Homestown Community Park to reflect my mother, an icon in the Homestown Community name, and I was guided by Mr. Joey Brown's office. Are you, hey, Joey, I. To, that, you know, he gave me the history of it, you know, it was way before my time, even though my hair is gray, I am a bit young. So I did follow the procedures and came home from abroad in June, sent the memo to Mr. Joey, and I was told by Ms. Hart that if I, you know, want to be here to answer any questions, if the memo didn't speak for itself, then that's what I'm here for, along with my brother, Samuel.
I don't think we have any questions, Mr. Brown. I know, that's for the sake of transparency, please explain.
Yes, sir. It's actually, the land, as you know, is not actually titled to the commission, it's in the name of the trustees of Homestown. And so, it's actually, as we talked, she went and talked to the trustees, and trustees are okay and supportive of the renaming. So it's really, unless the board needs to take action on it, there's no need really for you to take action. But since it is a place that's being leased by the board from the trustees, it would be just good information for her to be able to share with y'all, to know that the trustees have recommended this and are okay with it, and I think her memo outlines it, and in fact, I think she indicated they would take care of the signage and do whatever needed to be done to do it.
It's done, no problem. It's on me. Yeah, and I socialized it with the officers as well as people in the community, and I, I thought I would have had, have issues getting signatures, but everyone was like, definitely, let's name it after Mrs. Helen, because she's been there from the beginning, even selling fish sandwiches with the other ladies in the community to buy the property, let alone serving there as the, um, the lunch lady for the Liberty County Seminole program for eighteen years. So it's, I just, it'd be an honor to name it after my mom, you know, she's, she's been passed about, what, nine months now, and we wanted to seize the moment.
Okay. Are the trustees organized or just a?
They're, they're, they're organized. I remember going to a meeting about five years ago, but I, I think, in light of this, this exercise, I think they need to kind of reorganize, because, you know, people are moved, moved on, they're, you know, transitioning and whatnot. So that's another thing I would probably, you're probably seeing back up here, I want to do some other things for the community as well, but there is an organized.
Okay. Trustees.
Trustees, officers, yes, yes. Yeah, Ms. Mary.
So, Mr. Brown, I think it would be in order then if we had something from the trustees?
We do.
Yes, sir. I apologize if that wasn't in your package, but there should have been a copy of the memo.
Package. I didn't go far enough. Okay, so, all right, so, so, so your plans are to, you said, erect a sign and then have a little ceremony?
I would like that. I may not be home, I have to go back to Jordan in August. I was hoping that maybe if they can get this, the sign signage made soon enough, we would, but I think it's befitting to have a ceremony, even if we erect it before I.
Got you.
Come back, we can have it in the summer, and that will kickstart the reorganization of the committee for Homestown with new vision, new blood.
We can work with that just fine, just let us know when that.
Oh, definitely. You guys will participate, I hope.
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
All right, any questions for Ms. Bella? Thank you so much, congratulations.
You're welcome.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right. Government agreement, City of. Does Sammy want to say anything?
Sammy?
No, just picking on Sammy. I'm picking on Sammy. Government agreement, City of Gum Branch.
Yes, sir. This is actually just a renewal of an agreement between the Liberty County Commission and Gum Branch for use of their building on 196 to station fire equipment. Associated with that, because it is, they're letting us use it free, basically, and have been for years, it's understood. uh, it's understood that the protection we provide to the Gun Branch area will, um, be offset in cost as a result of letting us use that space. But again, it's the same agreement that was actually put in place, uh, almost ten years ago, twelve years ago now, and we just wanted to put a new copy on the file, nothing has really changed.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Do we have those with the other municipalities? Allenhurst and Riceboro.
Yes.
We've got, where, where is there, I mean, what do we do? Offset theirs completely, or?
No, sir, so, uh, Riceboro, we, we have it, we only have it with, um, Waltiveville, right now Waltiveville and Riceboro to go into the unincorporated areas, and we give them a stipend amount for going out and fighting those.
But I mean, um, Gun Branch, do they have a fire department?
No, sir, so, so, so it's kind of a, a little bit of reverse. Instead of us, instead of Gun Branch paying us to provide fire protection inside their little area, they just do an offset. And, but by putting our truck in that station, it helps with, with ISO. Where applicable, as y'all pointed out last time, um, in that area, having a substation, so to speak, and an apparatus there.
But there's no room to put a truck in there, or?
There's one in there now.
Yes, sir, there's one in there.
Is it ours?
Yes, sir.
I knew it was an older building.
Yeah.
Yes, it's housed in there.
So we'll do that in the Fleming area? I mean, on, um, down below the trails, we can do that? If we've got Fleming, that'll donate a piece of property? I mean, we've already got a fire station there, haven't we? So we ought to be able to do the same thing there?
Yes, we could.
I'm just wondering about that in the McIntosh. I mean, McIntosh is within the five mile, without of the five miles. Actually, what is it between Schuylkill and the other one, is about three miles?
Probably.
Well, I'll be on the lookout for something in there, because that would really help the, the folks in that area there. Maybe up the road there, um, the camp, we may have property in there. Um, where the landfill, I mean, the convenience center is at. That's all I had.
I have a question, Joey, you, you said that, um, we've had this agreement, nothing has changed, it's been, um, the same for about ten years, but I'm, I'm looking on the second page in three, the terms of agreement and, uh, for termination. So you said it's the same as it's been for, as I said, the last ten years, but this is saying that, um, that, uh, the agreement could be, it'd be terminated at midnight a year from now?
We, we do these, we do these agreements for a year at a time.
Every year?
Yes, sir.
So every year we, we get the same.
Yes, sir, with all, with all the other municipalities too.
Okay.
You may remember, I think it was actually two meetings ago that you renewed the one with Riceboro and Waltiveville.
I mean, Allenhurst doesn't have a fire station or nothing like that, so what, what do, who provides that, Waltiveville?
Waltiveville is removed out between Waltiveville and Heinzville.
In Heinzville?
Yes.
Is it because Allenhurst is between Waltiveville and Heinzville? Yeah, I guess we need to catch them while they're in the same place. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with the City of, the internal government agreement with the City of Gun Branch.
Second. Motion, second, we approve the government agreement as presented with the Liberty County Board of Commissioners and the City of Gun Branch. Any further discussion?
All, all the thing I'd say is, uh, I think we, we've learned a valuable lesson here, and that is, we need to be looking other places quick. I mean, we building a big fire station, and we probably ought to be building some smaller ones, so that's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Chair, once we get through it, I got a question for Mr. Brown.
All in favor of the government agreement? Alright, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Brown, you, did you say that we were receiving an agreement with Riceboro and Midway on, uh, use of their service, or we have not?
We, we have not gotten Riceboro's back yet, the only one we, that the commission authorized trying to do was Riceboro's and Waltiveville.
Waltiveville, okay, I'm sorry, not Midway. But we have not gotten it back yet.
We have not gotten them back yet, no, sir.
But with that being said, Mr. Brown, that, the truck itself is in that building. If needed, then our, the Liberty County firemen go and, and get it for, if needed, but, okay, that's what I want to understand. Maybe, clarity there.
Alright, alright, thank you, uh, contract Everbridge, Stanley, you coming down?
I'm here today to, um, ask you to renew a contract that we have with Everbridge. This is for our emergency notification system, um, that EMA uses to mass notify the, the public in an emergency, evacuation, weather, uh, that kind of thing. Uh, the contract is for fourteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars per year for the next four years, it's a four-year contract. Uh, this money is included in the IT budget, has been budgeted for this year.
Any questions, Ms. Stanley, about the contract?
And Mr. Dodd's also here, if y'all have any questions.
Yes, we, we currently have a agreement with them, we're just renewing it for the next year.
This is a renewal, there's a little bit of an increase, they're adding on, um, some additional numbers, they're going to be able to pull in some cell phone numbers and some other numbers that we didn't have before, but all this is in the budget, IT budget.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Stanley?
Just one, uh, Clint, now, uh, just, just, could you just kind of summarize the Ever, Everbridge and, um, what, what does the, the contract entail?
So what the, what Everbridge does, it's a mass notification system, it's, uh, sometimes referred to. Mass notification, it's some.
Ass notification?
Mass notification, yes, sir. It's sometimes referred to as a reverse nine-one-one system. It basically pulls in everybody's phone number from the white pages, all businesses from the yellow pages. This company will actually pull in some cell phone numbers, not all the cell phone numbers, um, voice over IP phone numbers such as the ones the county has, there's, you know, the newer telephone services like Xfinity and stuff like that. Um, it automatically alerts people for weather events, they can sign up for certain weather events, and it'll automatically notify people in the system for others. Uh, we can send out notices at any time, and we also use it to access the iPOS system, which basically sends the alerts to your cell phones. To every, anybody that's on a tower in Liberty County, if we send out an alert to those towers, it goes to your cell phone whether you sign up or not.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Everbridge contract as presented and explained by Mr. Stanley, any further discussions? All in favor, raise your hands, please. Any reposes?
Thank you.
Mr. Dodd, thirty, thirty seconds to, to push EMA and storm preparedness, thirty seconds.
Man, we, we're on a record time today.
Hey, good evening, um, we just want our citizens, I know we've been doing a lot of public outreaches, going to some churches, and I, I know Commissioner Stevens had us come out to a, a couple of events, we got one tomorrow. We just want the citizens to, uh, prepare for hurricane season, I know we're in the middle of hurricane season, but it's always a good time to prepare for hurricane season.
Or less. You know, uh, do, do, I, I saw your, your heat advisories, you might want to throw that in too, while you.
So, uh, yeah, as you know, it is getting hot, uh, here in, uh, Georgia. Look, be prepared for the heat, um, do your physical labor outside in the early morning, late in the evenings. But if you got to work out in the, the heat, make sure you're drinking the water and staying cool, take, let your body recover from the heat. Takes a couple of days for you to hydrate, so if you know you're going to do some physical labor on Saturday or Sunday now, is the time to start hydrating.
I did not know that. And I worked in medical. Couple of days. Thank you, sir, give me your, give me your contact information in case they want to call you.
You can call us at, uh, three six eight two two zero one, or we're located at one hundred Liberty Street.
Thank you, sir, appreciate what you do. Minister of Report.
Yes, sir, and I, like, like Mr. Dodd, I'll make it quick. Uh, wanted to first address, uh, Splotch Historic Cultural Funds, as you know, uh, it's a program you've done over the last couple of sales tax. Uh, the funds have started to accumulate in Splotch seven now. In fact, you see at the bottom there, as of June twenty-third, closing of the books, there's about eighty-three thousand dollars that's accumulated in that account. Uh, last time, what you did is you had a committee that basically screened applications that came in. Committee then reviewed them for completeness, reviewed them for legality, for distribution of the funds. And if you remember, there's an application process that's there, that also includes a access easement deed to be able to use the funds for those purposes. What, what I wanted to submit for your consideration tonight is, is this timetable, if the board want to approve it, to go ahead and get those applications out this month, and then have them back to the recommendations to the board by September the fifth for, uh, for distribution of those qualified entities.
Commissioners, are we back in consensus, in agreement with the timeline?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, alright, everybody's good, sir.
Great, uh, next thing, just an update. Sorry, I ain't got the quicker. You can go one more for me. We completed work on the SOAR building, this, the old building across from JOJ, as you know, and we knew there were some roof issues there. It has been fully completed, we, we obviously encountered some stuff under the deck that we had to fix. So I think the original project started out at about thirty-eight thousand dollars, it's going to end up closer to about forty-eight thousand dollars. So I just want to kind of make you aware of that, but it is in good shape, got a new roof deck now, and everything is solid and sealed, and so it ought to be good to go, so.
Joey, is that, is that the prison reentry building?
It is, yes, sir.
And what, what SOAR, that's the same thing?
It's, um, it's the acronym for.
Prison reentry?
For the re, prison reentry program.
The P.
Yes, sir. I'm curious now, I'll have to find out what it is and let you know.
Oh, wait, okay, that's where Daisy, that's where Daisy Jones is.
That is, yes, sir. That's where, that's where she is. Uh, just a couple of other quick items to update you on too, if you will. Uh, I know that, uh, Commissioner Geyer, in fact, reached out to me, there's been some others of y'all that have reached out to me concerning inflatable units on county property, especially recreation, to do that, and the insurance, last time they did their property and casualty review had, had advised us to try to stay away from those, especially as we furnish them. Um, I have talked to the gentleman, and he said that, you know, probably they'd be amenable to looking at the possibility of allowing those on county property if certified companies would meet the criteria they would need to meet for bonding and insurance. In addition, you know, listing a county as additional insured, carrying the, you know, liabilities that they need to carry. So if, if the board desires, I'd, you know, we'd like to try to explore that and get that language together for those companies and, and ask that to be considered by the board. I don't know that all companies would be willing to carry those standards, but they would need to, uh, in order to meet those guidelines.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, Joey, when, when I gave you a call, I got a, I had to got a call from, um, someone from the Freeman Grove community, and they were having a family reunion, and, you know, I guess they had young family members, and they, they wanted to know why they couldn't. And, and I called you and, and you told me, so, um, you know, if that's something that, um, that we can, you know, for liability reasons, uh, look at. I, I can see where, you know, something could happen on county property, but, um, you know, if it's something that, um, we could take a look at, because that is something that was, that was requested by this particular family, but, um, maybe other people probably want to look at the same thing.
Yesterday, yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, that's in the paperwork, but you know, how you kind of breeze over stuff, you don't really read that. Paperwork that inflatables are not, uh, allowed, but what confuses people is, you can do it in the city, or you can do it other places, but you can't do it in the county, so that's what has folk, uh.
They go through an agency to rent them anyway, so what we'd want to do is find out who those agencies are, we'd get the language and present them to the agencies, and those that could meet the stipulations in there, then, you know, we'd give those names to the folks. Obviously, when they're renting, if they said we want inflatable, then we'd be able to pass those names on to.
I would say let's explore that avenue and see what it looks like.
But you know, you're, you're, um, you're making me think here that, uh, some, some of these companies could not be insured?
Right.
That's a risk. True risk.
Well, I, they probably don't want to, uh, take the liability, they probably don't want to be insured for something like that, because, you know, you, you got kids bouncing around and jumping around and, um, and a bunch of them on there, it's not, you know, you, you think the parents would kind of control that, but, you know, it ain't much you can do for a five-year-old boy that's kind of rambunctious, I mean, and he jumps off or get pushed off or something like that, so, um, I can see why a company would say, no, you rent it at your own risk. I can see why they would do that.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained, so we'll try to.
Okay.
Try to see if we can help that out.
Okay.
The other, just to let you know, Leighton Street is the street over there next to where the property is that you acquired for the Health Department, it's got the existing dwelling on it, the old dwelling, and just want to let you know, I've already contacted, um, Environmental Group to do the asbestos study in there, to see if there's anything that needs to be abated, so we can go ahead and demolish that, uh, so it won't be a liability for us. We get that, get that on out of the way, I should have that probably in the next couple of weeks.
Is it just one?
It is, yes, sir, it's just one.
Just one unit?
One in one little storage building in the back.
Okay, okay.
Uh, other good news, I think I sent to y'all was, the, the license transfer has occurred for EMS. So, uh, it's now licensed to Liberty County Board of Commissioners, um, not under the hospital anymore. So, uh, we're proceeding with all the changes and everything we have to do there.
Good job.
Yep.
Thanks to everybody for, for helping with that. Uh, Justice Center HVAC system is currently down, um, one of the units, one of the four big units that's in there. We have actually had parts on order for a long time, they've just notified us that, that those parts are not going to be available. Uh, they're trying to get us a timeframe, just wanted to make you aware. Uh, judges are aware, everybody's proceeding is comfortable, even in the, even in the hot weather, so, so it's going. We did receive the certificate of occupancy for EMS station too, they started moving furniture in there last week. Uh, the technology piece is getting turned up this week, and so hope to be able to have them moved on over there. And in that being said, I'll get Maria to kind of search y'all's schedules for some kind of ribbon cutting that we can do, probably in the next, within the next thirty days, whenever's convenient with y'all, probably in the morning time, uh, whatever fits y'all's schedule to do that, so that's coming along very well. You're familiar with the Louis Frazier Bridge replacement, just going on, just want to let you know that environmental letters have gone out to property owners in that area, that's part of GDOT's requirement, that environmental assessment get done, I think Trent mentioned that to y'all last time.
With the critters, right?
With the critters, and, and the plants, and the plants too, remember, around that area. So I just wanted you to know, if, if, if you have anybody, you know, it has a return, it had, on there for people to contact, but if they should reach out to you, tell them to call us, and we'll be, be glad to get them information about what's going on there to do that. Did receive a letter today that your twenty twenty-four L-MIG was funded.
Good number.
Uh, Mr. Long will be working with you to get those projects that you, that you might want to do out, uh, to get those done. Uh, we did open Public Works bids today for the Public Works Department, we had three good bidders, three good proposers, uh, it's, it's built as a proposal. Everything is shaping up to try to get that back to y'all in August, and as you remember, that's a project that you'll, you'll bond and that the sales tax seven will pay the bond on. And the good news is, is we went out there and the, in the environment we're in now, and we anticipated ahead of Splotch how much that project might be. Turns out we were pretty close, so, uh, we're, we feel real good about that, so we'll be doing that. Uh, and then finally, um, Mr. Mosley, twisted arms, pulled arms, we basically have sold the old EMS building down there, even though they're not fully out, the old metal building, so, so that was sold, and he gave me a piece of paper with that on there, and it was a little over nine thousand dollars. Thank you, ten thousand dollars. We'll receive ten thousand ninety-eight dollars for that building, which will include, obviously, the removal, the only thing we'll have to pull out is the concrete slab.
What's the timeframe on getting it removed?
Did we say within thirty days? I believe we want it removed within thirty days.
Okay.
So it'll be out there in plenty of time. Pretty good, took her.
Is some of that space going to be used for the new public works?
Yes, ma'am, it'll, oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it's kind of dead in the middle.
Okay. I thought it was, I can't remember the exact configuration of the new building.
Yes, ma'am. And the only other thing was a reminder from, uh, Ms. Tart about the countywide planning session, the scheduled for September fourteenth and fifteenth. If you would please, sooner you can let her know, if y'all are going to be able to go, that'd be great.
What was those dates?
That's September the fourteenth and fifteenth.
What is that for, Joey?
County, that's that countywide workshop.
Okay.
This held every year.
Okay.
I'll get her to touch the rest back.
Joey, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Joey, kind of refresh me on this, um, the twenty twenty-four L-MIG, and I think this would be the, the first one. And I think this would be the, the first one that, um, with the redrawing of the district lines, where I won't have any, um, unincorporated area in my county, you know, I got the part of Heinzville where I live, um, Waltiveville, which is a municipality, and Allenhurst, which is a municipality. So I, I no longer have Homestown or McIntosh or even Longreach the way it used to be one time before. So is this money distributed for just unincorporated areas of the county? Would, would it be distributed, uh, evenly throughout the commission, or, I mean, how, how is that done? I, I know, I, I was involved, I think it was, um, me, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Thrift, and maybe when Pat was here, I, I, I can't remember, but I, I don't think Eddie and Justin had anything to do with it. So what, what's, how, how is that, um, distributed?
So the money's going to come to you in a lump sum, and you remember in the previous years up to this year, you'll always get with Mr. Long on potential projects you might want to do in your districts for use of those funds. I remember.
That, that's all, that's all the commissioners?
All the commissioners.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And, and answer your question, it can be used incorporated or unincorporated. This money's coming to you in a lump sum, and as long as it gets used for road improvements.
Okay.
Yes, it can be used.
And we, don't we have like a year or so, one year to use it? Is there a timeframe most?
You, you know, I actually want to look back, I, I believe actually you can bank some of those monies for twenty-four months, if I remember right, so that you can add on to projects, I think we've actually done that before.
There's none left now?
There's some that's, that's currently active right now, yes, sir, from twenty-three.
Not as much as this, I remember, this is, this is a good number.
And you, you know, it's based on your roads, road line, center mile.
Yeah.
I think Trent did a good job in getting that.
Uh, you finished, Mr. Brown? We want to do something with Miller Park, opening it up by Friday.
Okay.
It won't be the PAVI in there, but we're going to open it up if we get everything satisfied, Ms. Chairman, like we talked about the other day with.
He's talking about his soft opening yours.
Yeah.
Before the official opening.
Yeah.
I wrote to your district today. No, I really did.
Mr. Hendrix, Aaron, I'm gonna give you thirty seconds to talk about it. Have I got the wrong person?
Patrick.
Pa- Patrick, I'm sorry. I confused you. With Aaron, with, I'm sorry, I said, how are you? Good, 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 I'm sorry. You, well, y'all, y'all reminding each other. Oh, now see you're just a little thicker.
Ms. Chairman.
Before we leave, I know we had a moment there, we talked about Mr. Dixon, but.
I do not know.
Miss Myrtle Johnson, I, I'm sure Commissioner Thrift, Joey would know her. But, uh, Carl Johnson's wife, Carl, served eight years, I believe, on the county commission. And, uh, she passed away, she'll have, uh, she worked at Georgia Power in the local office downtown and out there on the highway. But anyhow, uh, they're going to have a visitation here tomorrow at Carter's. Uh, between ten and eleven, and she'll be, um, buried in Elum Cemetery, so. Elaine, their daughter, worked for the DA's office, and Walter is a federal magistrate in, um, North Georgia now.
I remember her.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
We need to get, I guess, the committee for appointment committee, or someone needs to get with you to get some clarification on a couple of boards the other day. Especially the nine-one-one board, to make sure we get it straightened out, so. We need to catch it with you sometime to do some correction on that one. And also, I believe that we may have one member that's serving, uh, one of those appointment board that does not meet the criteria, may not, no, no longer live in the county, and I think it requires that they live in the county.
Just let me know, and I'll.
Yeah.
It's okay, y'all, we, we could, we could break this record.
Yeah, we can. We're going to.
Cocked and loaded.
All right, offer good order. Chair, turn the motion to a chair?
Oh, well, it was. It's okay, y'all. It's okay.